Engage policing and this is a special listening session. And I want to be very clear from the outset that we are here. Because of George Floyd. We are here because Black Lives Matter. Although that is not always reflected in the values of our country. We are here because leadership has failed to protect. Black lives time and time again. This is not a symptom just of Minneapolis, but of nationwide here in Portland. People like Patrick Kimmons, Quanis Hayes, Kendra James. And many, many more individuals. And in this conversation and in today's session, we will be centering black lives. This is not a conversation about riot. This is not a conversation about protests. This is a conversation about black lives and what the city of Portland specifically, the, the groups that we are in charge of bringing together, the Portland Police Bureau are going to do. To change their policies and their practices so that black people are not dying in their hands. I want to thank elected leaders who are here today, city leadership. Groups that we work with are the police commissioner, Mayor Ted Wheeler. He has the power to invest in black communities through education, through jobs. And in his role as the police commissioner. Chief Resh, who I believe will be joining us on a call at some point, has the power to change the policies. That impact police violence and allow officers to kill black people.
They have an interpreter.
And allow them to not be held accountable. And this conversation also has to include the Portland Police Association and Darryl Turner. And the union must work with the community. And must work, the commissioner and the police chief, hold officers accountable. Protect, yes, police, police officers' rights as workers, but not when that becomes in conflict with the rights of individual people to live. So that is what this session is about. I'm going to pass it on to my co-chair, Mr. Kalik, to introduce himself and share some brief remarks.
Thank you very much, Lakiana, and thank you all for being here. As, as some of you know, I, I named my firstborn child Selma, and I did that in part because John Lewis has always been my, my role model, as someone I looked up to as an American, as a public servant. And I want to thank you for being here in his voice. Yesterday, he mentioned, he said this, and I'll, I'll quote his words because I think they're, they're great for this moment. I know your pain, your rage, your sense of despair and hopelessness. Justice has indeed been denied for far too long. Rioting, looting, and burning is not the way. Organize, demonstrate, sit in, stand up, vote, be constructive, not destructive. And that's what all of you are doing by joining us here today to share your voice, to share your pain, to share your perspective. And to share your belief in holding power to account. So thank you all for being here and we look forward to the conversation. I'm sorry, was I muted the whole time?
You were not.
You're fine.
Right, thank you.
And then you can unmute yourselves, but I muted everybody.
Thank you.
And so, and I think is, are you going to read the group agreements?
Yes. Man Campbell, PSEUP member, and I'm going to read our group values. Trust, open mindness, assume positive intent, listen with intent. Safety to be brave and vulnerable. Effective communication. Multiple intelligences, different learning styles. Don't take things personally, don't make assumptions, do your best, be impeccable to your word. Feel comfortable clarifying things with questions. Be free to call out bias. Step up or step back. Wait, be mindful of your level of contribution. Passion and compassion. Compromise. Comfort with ambiguity. Integrity. Perseverance. Self-care, community care. Talk to each other, not about each other, and we as a group take care of one another. Thank you all for being here today.
Okay, Hannah, Andrew, someone leading this?
Lakiana, this is.
Sorry, I thought I was, I'm talking over here and it was on mute. I just wanted to give the, for those of you who aren't familiar with PSEUP, there's, there's four subcommittees. The Race, Race and Ethnicity Subcommittee, Policy and Settlement Agreement Subcommittee, Behavioral Health Subcommittee, and the Youth Subcommittee. And PSEUP was brought together because of a Department of Justice Settlement Agreement between the City of Portland and the Portland Police Bureau. And the US government because of unfair practices of persons with perceived mental health and use of force. So that's a little brief overview of us, and if we can have our members check in. I'll just go down the list just so we can make sure to grab everybody. Andre?
Hi, this is Andre LaRoche, one of your PSEUP members. Ready to sit back and listen to everyone here.
Elliot?
Elliot Young, also PSEUP member, alternate co-chair, and I'm also ready to listen.
Vadim?
Hello, everybody. Vadim Mazursky, Secretary. Thank you very much for attending this meeting and I look forward to hearing from everybody.
Amy?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all so much for coming and attending. I am the Chair of the Behavioral Health Subcommittee. And we're meeting Tuesday night at 5:30. The agenda is online and we would love to have you there. Thanks so much.
Marcia?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marcia Perez. I use she/her pronouns. I am the Chair of the Racial Equity Subcommittee. I saw in the chat box, somebody asked what PSEUP stand for, and that is the Portland Committee on Community Engaged Policing. There is nearly 300 people on this call. I thank everyone who's taking the time to check in with us and we're ready to be here with you and listen.
Yolanda, are you on the call?
Yes, this is Yolanda Saliero. I'm the co-chair for the Youth Subcommittee, and thank you all for being here.
Tajee, are you on the call?
Tajee is not on the call today.
Okay, we have a Steve. Jamari. Okay, I think I got everybody. So we are going to hear from a few folks to kind of kick off our listening session. So this thing will be, this meeting will be in three parts, a listening session to start us off. And then we will be presenting a, a statement by PSEUP, which we were not able to do. Everything that PSEUP does has to be done in public because we're subject to public meeting laws. And the PSEUP bylaws would state we can't produce statements without public input. And then we will be doing a, another recommendation on a qualified immunity doctrine. To kick this off, I'm going to turn it over to Nikengay Johnson, who is the Executive Director and President of the Urban League to give us remarks for, she will have five minutes to speak. And then we might have a couple more speakers after that. Nikengay, are you there?
I am. Thanks Lakiana, I appreciate you. If you can hear me, will you give me a thumbs up, please? Just trying to check my sound. Okay. Thanks y'all, I appreciate it. I am Nikengay Harmon Johnson. I'm the President Chief Executive Officer of the Urban League. Is a 75-year-old Justice and Social Commissioner. For many perams in Portland metro area and occasionally outside of that geography. But advocacy, a powerful advocacy across the state. In the halls of our district, but also in other communities around the state. Where the news feed, there are African-Americans in every county.
Nikengay, we're having audio problems. I'm so sorry. You're breaking, people are saying they're in trouble here in you. Do you want to try again?
Okay, I just heard you. So you're saying you want me to, you want me to try again?
Your audio is cutting in and out.
So if I, as I'm talking now, is my audio still cutting out?
You're good, you're good now.
Okay, thank you. If it happens again, I may cut off my video. So just give me a sign, give me the, give me the ear, if you will, if it happens again. Okay, thank you Theo. I live in South Salem, y'all. I have country broadband, so. The Urban League does this work every day. And I want to, I want to share with you tonight a few of the reasons that I'm delighted to have been invited by Lakiana to speak with you. And also maybe to tell you about some things that are hitting for me right now. One of the reasons I'm glad to be here is because it's good anytime members of the community come together to work together to build justice. And I know how hard it's been for this group to coalesce in previous iterations of groups serving the same purpose. Because this work is hard and it hits you in the chest. It's personal for most of us who do this work. Even if you're not black or you're not brown, you're a member of the community, it should be personal for you. Understand that my job is difficult every single day. We're sort of, you know, racial discrimination firefighters. When someone is being a bad actor and denying someone a right that they are entitled to. We show up, we run in that direction. Rather than running the other way, and we are who we serve at the Urban League. And so it's personal for us too. We don't simply engage at arms length, but rather we're serving our brothers and sisters and neighbors and cousins and friends. So if you are feeling some kind of way right now, that's all right. Because that's what it feels like to be about justice. If you're not feeling anything, you know what, that might be okay too, because you're here tonight. My chest has been numb for a few days. My head's been really foggy. Because yet another, we're at another instance of seeing our cities erupt because our country has yet to reckon with the necessity to build justice, to reconcile with African-American people in this country. So every decade or so, our cities erupt again and again because innocent unarmed black people are victimized by state violence. We see it, we know it, we live with it. For that matter, how long has the settlement agreement been in place with the Portland Police Bureau? How many chiefs have been in charge? How many mayors, right? One prosecutor, that's about to change, but we've been talking about this long before that, with the Albana Ministerial Alliance and others fighting to get a settlement, right, to get some oversight from DOJ. And still here we are in a so-called progressive city. With you using your time and your goodwill and your skill and your effort to fight to make public servants. People paid with your tax dollars. Respect civil rights and do the right thing. This is the world we live in. People in the streets are sick of it. I'm, I'm sick of it. And my guess is that there are this 300 people in this meeting this evening because you're sick of it too. It, it, it amazes me that we are required by societal norms to act as if though all of this is normal. Imagine, for example, if your kid walking into school, you know, teachers, public school, and the janitor's just punching them as they walk through the door. Because the janitor just, just does that. That's what the janitor does. And it's okay, and that happens in every school, in every county, in every city across the country. And somehow we find a way to just rationalize it, and well, he's got a contract, so what are you going to do? Maybe we transfer him to a different school and see if some of this other guy's going to punch differently. The fundamental basis on which policing in America is built is on the oppression and death of black people. Created with slave codes, right? To catch enslaved Africans, to drag them back where their masters said they needed to be. That's from whence policing has evolved. It's no surprise that we continue to see white supremacists in law enforcement. Now, some of you don't know me, and so let me show you a little context with you. I am a daughter of a former law enforcement officer. My daddy was a CO and a PO in Portland and in Oregon. One of the first black men who was a CO in the state penitentiary. I'm also the niece and the granddaughter of former sheriffs and big city police officers. Law enforcement is not foreign to me. My husband was a prosecutor, he's a civil rights attorney, he used to defend police officers in New York City. I myself, I'm dressed out a little bit today, so I hope that you'll pardon me and Lakiana, I'm going to wrap it up real quick. I'm wearing my Howard University School of Law hat because I am an attorney. Y'all, when I tell you that it's rotten from the inside, I mean that for real. And it's so strange to me that we have to act like it's not. I'm delighted that you're here tonight because I think you're not willing to do that anymore. I will say in closing that leaders need to act right now. We have heard how mayors feel, we have heard how county commissioners feel, we've heard how people in power feel. Presidents of corporations and whatnot, now we need to see what they will do. Not by increments, because remember, this police chief and this mayor's office two months ago sat in front of Simon, you were there. Let me throw. Thank you Theo. Lakiana, I'm wrapping it up, I'm going to turn my video off.
Okay, yep, because it was just cutting out a little bit.
This mayor's office and this US attorney. This police chief sat in front of you a few months ago and said, hey. Listen, Portland Police Bureau has met terms of the settlement, we don't need to hold back anymore, let's just let it go away. It was a lie and be with them, but they say it with a straight face on our dollars, and they've done it before, and for what? At the same time telling that they want better, that they want to change, while not actually doing the change. I hope that you will join me in doing your best to call it, and then to hold the account of those people who are accountable to us, do the work that you don't want to put in this bureau. But our attorney's office, our JRS, and other prosecutor offices in our community. Lakiana, it wasn't exactly what I planned to talk about tonight, but thank you for allowing me to be fired up and to spend some time with y'all. It means a lot to be in community with you. I'm honored. Thank you.
Thank you, and there was no agenda for this. We were really specific when we were crafting this, that we wanted to just create space to share whatever folks were feeling on their minds. So thank you Nikengay for being here tonight. I'm going to ask for Mike Capes, if you are, I see you're on the line, if you want to meet yourself. He's ready to go. Mike, you there? I see you're there, but I'm not.
Can you hear me more?
Yep, yep, perfect. So I want to introduce, this is Mike Capes. He is Portland's own local rapper, also works at Roosevelt High School with our youth. We wanted to have three speakers start us off today to just kind of center the conversation. So Mike, the first question I have for you is just, as, as a black man, as a, as a lifelong Portland resident, how are you feeling in this moment?
Oh man, honestly, bro. It just feel like seeing the same movie over and over again. First off, man, I'm, I'm more of a raw, I'm a raw individual, man, so I'm, I might cuss, I might do that, so excuse me, but.
Speak your truth.
I just feel, I just feel like it's the same shit over and over, man. I don't, I don't trust the police, I don't have a reason to. At the moment, you know what I mean? I have no problem with white people, but also there is a trust gap right there due to just how things have always been in the United States presently and, and historically, you know what I mean? I don't think, I think that's a logical thing to have distrust as a black person. Especially in Portland, Oregon, where the racism is a little more coded and a little more passive aggressive. You never know anybody's intentions for you. Out here living, I'm from St. John's, so I grew up in a more, a more diverse area of Portland. I didn't really realize how, you know, how much white supremacy affected Portland until like I got out of high school. I did at a, at my level, but not like on a citywide thing, but. Yeah, bro, I'm just tired of this shit. It's like, what do we do? How many times can we ask? How many times can we be peaceful? Or how many times can we be judged for acting out what's going on to us? You know, what's, what's, what's? We can't kneel, we can't kneel, we can't, we start burning some shit up. They don't talk about the killing of us, and it's about property. It's, it's just, you get tired, you get tired of, you get tired of trying to get white people to see the value in your humanity. Really, that's what it is, and personally, me, I don't really care. You could choose to see it, or you could choose not to. Either way, I got to be black at the end of the day, and I got to look out for my family, and I got to look out for my friends. And I'm cool with having allies as well, but I'm just not with the, I'm not with the begging to be seen shit.
Yeah, talk to us about the trust gap. You talked about that a little bit. What, what will it take? Because that is our charges. What will that take for you and from what you see in the community to bridge that trust gap between the white community and the black community, or black community and the police?
Okay, what the white community means stepping up. It means stepping up and speaking power to the truth when you hear your white friends, family, coworkers on some bullshit, man. Don't sit back and feel like your words may not be strong enough because you aren't black or a person of color. No, speak, say what you feel, check them, and educate, and take, and take diversity training serious. Don't take it as something you're doing to go collect a paycheck and say you did it. Really do it. Talk to people, talk to people of color, black people, as you see them in the streets, or, I'm not just talking now, where you do that because you feel like you're being watched, I mean in general. Talk to people in grocery stores and get the history of these neighborhoods. And yeah, just, just don't act like we aliens when you see us, man. We got this stuff in us, but we don't walk around ready to knock a white person head off just because, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You can talk to us.
Absolutely. There's police officers on the call. I believe the chief is on here too, and my question to you is, what, what do you want to see from them to build trust between the black community and police officers? What has to happen in your perspective?
Okay, okay, man, I'd like to see, I'd like to see police officers hired from the areas that they patrol. I'd like to see community policing. I'd like to see police living in the areas that they're policing. Because I feel like if you build a relationship with, with the community you live in, it's not, you see me walking down the street and I look like a threat, no, it's Mike. He works at Roosevelt High School, let me talk to him. You know what I mean? It isn't a me versus them type thing, it's an us thing, if you're working in a community and you live there and you know the people and understand the codes and conduct and culture of that area. It's not Billy from Hermison, Oregon, coming into Portland and working in the North Precinct or the Northeast Precinct. I feel like when you live in a place, you've got context of what's going on. And that's what I would like to see, community policing. And when a police does kill somebody or brutalize somebody, I don't think police should be able to invest themselves, that doesn't make sense to me. I feel like there should be another, I don't know the exact words, but another, another team of people that invest police, that investigate police. Not, not police investigating police. If I go beat somebody up, I don't expect my homeboy to tell them. So at the end of the day, I think there needs to be something different with that. But I also think police could come to the schools more out of uniform. And come talk to kids. I work at Roosevelt High School, it's probably the most diverse school in the city. And I think if kids see more police officers in real life situations, like outside of being a police, coming and talking to them, playing basketball with them, knowing these kids, then they would be open to them, and it starts with the youth. They see what happens to us and they pick up the code, it's like, it's fuck the police at the end of the day. But if we, but if, but if police are in the communities and really trying to build with people, that starts to go away a little bit. It's going to take a long time, but it can't be us versus them type thing. It has to be communication, has to, them seeing police that look like them. I know a few that, that, I know a few black police, and it does make a difference when somebody sees a policeman that looks like them, because they know that at the end of the day, that policeman understands where they're coming from. If I'm yelling at my homeboy across the street in front of a, a black police, he might understand that black people, we just yell at each other like, what's up? But another police might see it and think there's something, there's something with that. I got to go check on them. It's, it's not that serious, bro.
Okay.
They need to live in communities, though.
Yeah, absolutely. Closing thoughts before we open it up to community members?
I just appreciate people being here listening, don't let this be the last time you listen to folks, man. Even in real life, if you have these, these type of tension type conversations, just listen, man. At the end of the day, I'm not white, you're not black, so at the end of the day, listen to my experience because you don't know it, and I'll listen to yours at the end of the day.
Appreciate you being here. Make sure you guys go support his music too. Is there a website that they could check you out at?
It could be Apple Music, Spotify, Bandcamp, it's just Mike Capes, that's M.I.C.C.A.P.E.S., man.
Appreciate you being here. We are going to open this up for the next, let's say about 40 minutes to community. Community thoughts, anything that you want to share, suggestions. I see Theo's got his hand raised, I'm going to let him jump in and say something before we keep going.
Yeah, real quick, if, if you can, and you are able to use the raise hand function, it'll help us keep track of who wants to speak, and then we'll give you that space to speak. So if you want to speak in the community portion, we would encourage you to do so, absolutely. Just use the raise hand function, please.
Thank you.
Just so everyone knows, the race, it's under, you click on participants, and then you'll see the raise hand function.
So this is a chance for all community members to share their thoughts. If you are part of the city staff and you want to talk, you have to talk in the community or as, in the capacity as a community member and not as your, you know, your position within any government role or whatever it is. We do want to recognize that Commissioner Hardesty is also on the line, and thank, thank her for being here and for highlighting today's meeting in her post on Facebook and some other platforms. As we are centering black voices, I want to open this first 10 minutes up, 10, let's say 15, to start with our black residents, to hear from them first, and I, I do not apologize for starting with them. So if you can use your raise hand function, or if you're unable to do that, physically raise your hand and we will, we will figure this out, so I'm going to.
Private message, and I will make sure you, you get called on.
So I'm going to just kind of look through the participant list right now. I'm going to start with Asukulu, who I do know is a young man, I believe at Catholic High School. Asukulu, you can unmute your microphone.
Yeah, hey Lakiana, thank you for posting about this call. My name's Asukulu Sangola, I go to Central Catholic High School in Southeast Portland. And first of all, I want to thank everyone for being here. First and foremost, I want to say that what we're seeing in our city is a boil over of tensions because black men and women are being killed at the hands of police officers, and it needs to stop. Right now, I felt very helpless recently. And so on Twitter, I actually called out our mayor and talked about the lives lost at home, the black lives at home. I think we need to stop acting like this is an issue that's in Minnesota, or this is an issue that's in New York. We need to talk about the Portland issue. We need to talk about the fact that a lot of people live behind the veil, that Portland is this progressive safe haven that, that doesn't have anything wrong with it. We, we've seen the gentrification, we've seen issues of police brutality. And I think that what we're seeing now is a boil over of that. And so I specifically called out the mayor to tell him to talk about his budget to people and to make it known that his budget is giving more money to the Portland Police Bureau. And I had to have conversations with my parents about de-escalation because they don't think. Police officers are. Safe. And that's a scary thought because. You come down, when it comes down to it, it's who's gonna protect the people from the police. Um, and specifically black people. And when you think about that, that's a scary question. To ask. And that's a scary question for a black man in America to have to. Contemplate. Um, and so I think we need to hold our elected officials accountable. I'm glad that we have a commissioner on the call. I think, um, I tweeted at Joanne. Yeah, well, but I need. I need to make sure to call in the commissioners and not to call out, but to call in and to have people talk about. With police brutality in Portland's. Way of solving these issues. We don't need more money to go to the Portland Police Bureau. We need more money going into our education system. We need more money going to. Community organizations like Word is Born, like Self-Enhancement. We need more money going into these communities because when I see this happening. I see my brother, I see my community members because I do live in North Portland and I do live. Um. And I do live in a neighborhood that is predominantly black. I, I see every single one of my black brothers and sisters in George Floyd. And I think we need to continue to raise our voices. And I don't care about a few burned buildings. I care about black lives that can't be replaced. Um, and I think we all need to make sure that that's. The thing that we care about and that's. And we're called, we're calling in our city officials and we're calling them to make meaningful change because it starts here. We need no, we need no more names.
Hmm. Thank you, Sukul. I really, really appreciate that. I can't think of someone better to kind of kick off. Um, this community, uh. Listening session portion of the call, um, just, and you hit it perfectly. You stayed right around two minutes. So as you're talking, if you can just. Make sure to keep your remarks within that. Um, I have, I see five hands raised. We're gonna go with. Again, just to remind you, this is, this, we're starting, uh, till about five fifty-five with black residents first. Um, so I have iPhone up next. Kevin, then, uh, Casey and then Shonda. Is there anyone on the phone that doesn't have a hand raised function that would also like to speak? Okay, we're gonna go with, um, iPhone. If you could please say your name. iPhone, you're unmuted, but we can't hear you. Okay.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you now. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. I didn't know it was me because I thought my, uh.
Oh wait, well, so we were trying to go with, uh, iPhone, but we're gonna go with you right now because, uh, I haven't heard from them. So go ahead. It's, it's Quentin.
Yeah, Quentin Blanton. Um, and I was just calling, you know. I think that, uh, well, some of the things I wanted to say about what is going on is, is, uh, this is much bigger than the murder of George Floyd. Um, what has gone on is that African Americans have been denied, uh. You know, wealth and the ability to live as American citizens. While white America, they get to live great lives and kind of go on and have. Move in ways that we never could. So. It's not just the murder of George Floyd. It's the murder of so many within the last few years. Uh, black people killed by police, but it's also. Wealth inequality and like the denied opportunities that we have as black people in this country. And. We just watched, you know, the looting and the rioting. And things of that nature. No, it's not okay necessarily, but we just watched. You know, the treasure, uh, some of the most wealthiest people in the country steal like trillions of dollars from the treasury. So. I don't necessarily want to center what's going on with that. I think what's more important is. This is emblematic, so much bigger. It's about what's going on with black America and how. We haven't been allowed to be citizens in this country and live. Normal American lives. We've been robbed and plundered. For hundreds and hundreds of years. So that's where the frustration and the anger is coming from is the fact that we live. Basically as third worlders in a first world country. So I just wanted everybody to keep that in mind.
Hmm. Thank you, Quentin. Thank you. Um, we're gonna go with Kevin next.
Good afternoon. I'm Kevin Modica. I'm a longtime Portland resident. And, uh, former employee of the city of Portland with the Portland Police Bureau. Um, my question. Is for the commissioner. And also for the PCEP members to consider. The. Property damage and the theft. Of items out of those properties. Seems to be a focus. And a anchor point for. Our mayor. And others to say, we are going to go after. These individuals. And prosecute them to the fullest. But given the promises of. Restorative justice. For individuals who have never committed crimes previously. And as well, the optic that. If in fact, the folks that created the damage. Were from out of state. And. Possibly. Mostly. Caucasian. And they are never found and apprehended. What is it that we are going to do? With the individuals that present as African American. And other ethnicities. When it comes to. Arrest indictment. Prosecution and sentence. Is it really keeping with the values? That have been espoused about arresting less. Diversion. And restorative justice. Is it going to be, well, in this case, this is different? Because. It's my understanding, the business owners all have insurance. At the end of the day, what is it that we want as a community and what will you be looking at? As PCEP? Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate your leadership. Um, we are gonna go with Casey next. I hope I said that right.
You, you did say that right. Thank you. And, and Kevin, thank you so much for your comments. Really grateful, uh, to listen to, uh, so. I think for me, as an, uh, prebuche. Black Muslim. African, um, I've been in this country about twenty. Years now, twenty-one years, so. And that's how far my being black American goes. Uh, so I want to listen to wisdom. And, and thoughts of the, our brothers and sisters from the African American community to guide us this conversation. So I have no place to. Um. Uh, suggest or put a thought today, what needs to be happening? I worked at Criminal Justice Reform for the last fifteen years. I worked from City of Portland. From Salem, um, I worked with, um. Put a policy forward together with many, many community, the, 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 community organizations. I'm sick and tired of seeing black people dying on the streets of this country. I'm literally been black twenty years in this country. I'm slowly dying inside. It's sickening what's happening. I want to say a couple of things before I finish. First of all, we know what needs to happen. We have done this work before. We have been here before. We talked about killing. In the past when people being killed. We, we've recommended solutions. Ferguson. When it happened. Michael Brown's killing, there was huge reports and policy recommendations has been put forward. And here we are today again talking about. So I think for me, it's not about, let's talk about again. Let's talk about what we have done. Why are we so? Not able to do the, the thematic change that needs to happen? And it's not up to the black community. Keep telling us what needs to be done and what needs to be changed. We know what needs to be changed. There's a cultural shift that needs to happen in this country. And we all have a stake on it to make sure that happens. First place to start, let's support our work that our commissioner, Joanne Hardesty is doing and in the city of Portland. Let's talk about police. Accountability. Let's talk about police union contracts that she's been working with. Us and my organization and many other organizations at this table. Let's, that would be a good place to start to support those kind of efforts that she's doing in, in the city. Secondly. There is only so much we can do, talking about it. I worked in, in the state level last session, couple of sessions ago, a, a bill called HB twenty-three fifty-five. I hope everybody was gonna look into that bill and see what's contained. It's the beginning of small reform statewide. But it's a necessary thing that needs to be done. My hope from here today is that. I hope we don't have to go another call a year from now, six months from now, two years from now, three years from now, and saying that, let's talk about another killing. And what we can do. We know what needs to be done. Let's do, move forward. Let's come together as a community. And let's listen to our brothers and sisters from the African American community. And other. Community who are being impacted by this issue and. Ensure that we can do the right thing. And let's make sure that we invest the community that's been, been, been impacted. We invest a lot in our local police force. That's maybe it's time to start engaging and talking about budget and how the city of Portland can. Slowly infesting. The community that has been impacted by this issue and other communities. With that said, I am really appreciative of the folks who organized this event. Thank you so much and looking forward to be working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Appreciate that. Um, if you're just jumping on, um, this is the community listening session for PCEP and this is the community session, a part, part of the dialogue. Um, where we are taking comments, suggestions. Posted questions. I, I seen there was some response to have Commissioner Hardesty answer the question that Kevin had posed. Uh, and if there's time at the end, we will have that, but we really want to allow people to vent right now and, and share their thoughts. Um, and for the next about five or so minutes, we're, we're, we're starting with having, um, black folks that want to, to talk first before we open it up to everyone else. So I have. Shonda next speaking. If there's anyone else, please either put your hand raised feature up or, um, if you're on the phone. Um, can you let me know and then we'll get you on the.
Can, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Shonda.
Thank you. Um, first, I'd like to give just a quick brief of some personal experience and then some questions. Um, recently I had a situation happen at my job. Um. And it was addressed, but it was never resolved. It was swept under the rug. Um. So that made me feel like. My voice, my safetiness didn't matter. I had another situation where my car was damaged and it was in a tow yard. And, um. I backed up my rental car to my car to empty out my belongings. This parking lot was shared by the, uh, the, um. The tow wreck, tow, tow wrecking yard and then another business in Southeast Portland. And, um, a white lady, um, pulled up to me and started yelling at me, screaming at me, what the F am I doing? Um, at that car, um, why am I taking the things out of the car? Now, mind you, she's going to work on the other side and I'm on the side where it's the. Um, area for damaged cars instead of just. Going to the owner of the tow company and saying, hey, you know, there's people in your, in, in your area or somebody in your area. Getting belongings out of the car. They would have nicely, uh, told her or she could have even approached me nicely and asked me what I was doing. And so I asked her, I said, do you want me to, um, approach you how you just approached me? I said, if I was to sit here and start yelling at you, pointing my finger in your face, getting it in your face right now, you would call the police. And I would get arrested for taking the belongings out of my car. She left and then the people who own the car company, um, I told them what happened. But it's just think simple things like that. That's an everyday thing that. Everybody's doing. So why, why do people feel like they need to get? Uh. I, I don't know. I, I felt like I was, I was targeted because I was black. Um, shh, shh. It was her space where she felt uncomfortable. My situation at my job, I was in the bathroom. Singing and praise and worship music. And the lady said I looked like a transient. Because when I came in the building, I had my bike helmet on. And I didn't have my work clothes on, but I had my badge on. But yet still. Her safety was compromised and not mine. So. The thing with. I heard today when I went to the, um, the peaceful gathering at SEI was. When things like this happen. One, there's. How, how can we get? Because I called, um, SEI. I called a few places to have some people help me voice my concern of what happened to me. Nothing happened. No, no one responded to me. Um, because I think my, my voice is valid. Then, um, some people had a, a pastor had addressed that said that if something were to happen to the police here, like in Min- uh, Minnesota. The police were able to be fired right away and that the police here cannot be fired right away. Why can't they? And what can we do to get that changed? When does that vote happen to where we can change that vote to where they can be fired right, right away? And because if, 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 if I was to attack somebody. I wouldn't get paid leave. I wouldn't be able to get unemployment. I, I would have no income at that point. So why do these people still get income and be, still be able to be supported? So. I voted. I want my vote to count. Can we make this change? Um. And yes, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Shonda, for sharing that. Um, I could definitely hear the pain in your voice. Um. And we will, we wrote that question down and maybe we'll answer some of them, um, at the end. Uh. Yeah, but thank you for sharing. Um, is there other folks on the phone, black folks on the phone or on, um, the regular call line? That would like to speak before we open it up to, um, everybody else? If you can just put your, raise your hand, uh, with their hand feature. Or if PCEP staff can just help me look through, there's many, many pages of people on here right now. Okay, we are gonna open it up to everybody, um, that. All races of folks can come in there and put your hand up and I will try and go through them. We're at six o'clock. So we're gonna go for. Another twenty minutes of comments. Um, and of course, anybody has questions that we don't get to, we will, we'll put them up there. The first hand that I am seeing. Is Ricardo. If you want to unmute yourself.
Hey, folks, um, this is Ricardo Lujan. I'm, uh, the director of advocacy with Latino Network. I wanna echo the words that Casey shared. Um. We, Latino Network are ready to stand beside. Our colleagues in the black community on the next steps. The, the one thing I do want to emphasize is that. A few moments ago, there was a picture and there's a lot of pictures right now being shared of. P P B taking a knee. And despite that being such a powerful moment. For the folks present. P P B before it stands up from taking that knee, needs to commit. To reform. Needs to commit to welcoming that reform. And it needs to commit from taking the reform being led. By the black community. Um. So I just wanna emphasize that. Because I know that there's still a lot of, uh. Just that the sharing of those photos are, uh, not painting the full picture. That's still, and a lot of the work still needs to happen. So. Um. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ricardo. Um, please raise your hand on the hand feature in here if you would like to speak. Or if there's someone on the phone who would like to share their thoughts.
Dustin Daniel has his hands raised and then El Seaton.
Okay, let's go with Dustin.
Hey, what's up? Uh, you know, obviously very difficult time right now. Um, I mean, I know for you, Lucky Anna, you have a tremendous organization that is doing great work, uh, to try to, um. Break down those barriers between, uh, you know, young black men and the police. Um, I was just, I, I had an idea that I was thinking about. Is there, is it possible? And I, I don't understand politics and how things get on ballots and things like that. But. I wonder if it was some way possible to mandate that police officers, um, are able to volunteer, uh. At, at organizations like Word is Born and other nonprofit organizations, um, that work with communities of color, work with youth of color. Um. To, to kind of, uh. Maybe help eliminate some of the negative perceptions, um, when you work directly with the people. when you work directly with the people who, who are doing the work and who are serving, serving the community. I just feel like it's important that, you know, this model of community-based policing comes back. I also feel like, I know we've talked a lot about having panels that are responsible for, you know, the interview process. And I would love it if, you know, before new police officers, before they go before the police chief or any of these other individuals, they need to go before the very people in the community that will be seen as, you know, thugs, like people, young black men who, if their parents are sagging, right? Or if all of these things that society, you know, looks at a person deemed they're thugs, I feel like they need to be the first person that people speak to about this. And if they can't look these individuals in the eye, then they don't need to even move to, to, to the next level. So this is something I want to get in writing and it's something I want to propose and hopefully, you know, with support, maybe get this on the ballot. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dustin. Appreciate that. There's a lot of comments in there praising that idea. PSEP as part of the settlement agreement is able to make recommendations that the police chief must must consider. So the racial equity subcommittee that Marcia Perez chairs would be a great place to start with this. You know, there's 345 people on the call. This is easily the largest attended PSEP meeting. And I think this is a great opportunity to channel some of what happened today or has happened in the past into, into actual work. So please follow up with us on that. I'm gonna go with L. Seaton next.
Hi, my name is Laura Seaton. I live in North Portland.
Having a little trouble hearing you. If you can speak up a little bit or change your microphone just a little bit so we can hear you better.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, some people are shaking their head, but try your best.
Okay, Laura Seaton from North Portland. I had a question about to PSEP about the Portland police officers and their body cameras. Are they? My question is, are they able to turn off their cameras themselves?
The police bureau, the Portland Police Bureau does not have body cameras.
They don't even have body cameras.
They don't have them. And no, we don't want to get too much into answering the questions, but they, they've tried to bring it up to city council before. And they kind of stalled on it. So they do not have them. Some agencies around the community do, but not PSEP, not Portland.
Okay, then my, my second thing that I wanted to ask was then, why during this emergency is the Portland police, the interactions, the scanner, why is that not available to us in the public to be able to hear what the officers are saying? Because that, that is more concerning to me that they don't have the, how can we keep them accountable if we can't actually monitor their communications?
Thank you. Appreciate that. We are, we, it looks like we'll have some time at the end. I know Commissioner Hardesty wants to respond to Kevin's answer. I want to have Shonda pose her question again at the end so we can get an answer to that. I think those are both doable, but I'm going to give the floor to Jill right now to give her question or statement or comment. It doesn't have to be questions. It can just be however you're feeling right now. But Jill, you are up.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
So I, maybe if you want to keep this towards the end, I did actually send an email. I am a student to the things in which I will not experience in this lifetime, meaning I'm a white female. My camera is not on because I look atrocious. I've been doing laundry all day. So but I just want to say one, thank you for, you know, putting this together and, you know, thank you for sharing the resources and everything. But two, I forget what her name was. I'm so sorry. The one, the woman that, who just spoke. But I did send an email to the mayor and all the other four elected councils. And I got a response from Amanda Fritz. I don't know if you would like me to share part of the response or wait towards the end. I know it is not my position to share the reasonings, but the, you know, the response that I got was very interesting. I was a little surprised. And you know what she had said, she point blank said, I don't support continued funding for body worn cameras. And then she also did shared experience. Mostly her statement or her response was around privacy concerns, which in my head, you know, of course, I don't know how the police, you know, and how they do their laws and how, you know, politics and whatnot. I try to stay informed with it. I don't know the nuances that go into making these things happen, right? But I want to learn. But it was interesting that she'd said privacy considerations are very important to me. I'm reading it verbatim. And she mentioned a situation in which she lost her husband and she wouldn't have wanted those leaked to the public. In my head, I'm like, well, how, isn't it so hard for us to get these police body cam videos? If the concern is privacy, you know, it's always so hard from the scenarios that we've seen to get that footage from the police departments. And when we finally do get them, they're, you know, majority of the time manipulated or shortened or, you know, and so, and maybe that's just my lack of trust in, in our judicial, or sorry, our, our systems in general. But I thought there was kind of a bit of bias in her opinion. And I try not to be biased, but, and I hope you know, I mean like full respect, but maybe that's something that will be addressed. But it's, I agree that there are privacy concerns, but you know, can we not, with any new thing, can we not build laws or regulations or something around that to protect those privacy concerns? If that's one of the main reasons. All right, I'm done. That was a tangent, but.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for that. If you have a question or a comment, please raise your hand. I'm going to ask Commissioner Hardesty to respond to Kevin Modica's question around will restorative justice be used equitably? When and if those responsible for the property damage and theft are apprehended? And where, I think the second part of the question was, how are we? Well, is Kevin on here still? If you could just repeat that second part.
Yes, I am, Lucky Anna. So, you know, it goes back to the commissioner's statement during the press conference. And I think that it's an awareness everyone has that those depicted on the camera footage, many of them presented as black or brown or other ethnicities other than white. And if in fact, there are outliers that are not from here that can fade back into whiteness and not be apprehended. When it comes to the efforts of the city to ask for charges to be filed, will restorative justice be considered and pushed as an option for those responsible?
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Hardesty, for being on here today.
Thank you. And thank you so much for organizing this. This is such a critical time to be having this conversation. And let me just start with Kevin's question. Anybody that knows me knows that I do not see police as the first responder to create community safety. It is important to me that community safety, the community is in the lead of community safety. Police officers are one piece of that, but they're certainly not the biggest piece and not the piece that's gonna be critical in keeping community members safe. I made that statement after looking at hours of rampage of businesses downtown Portland. And as Kevin said, what I saw in most of the video were young white men using scooters to bust glass out and beating up people. There were not a lot of black people, which is why I called the press out on why they kept showing a picture of the young, the two young African American men when they were talking about all the destruction that took place. When all they had was one iPad apiece. And I thought to myself, hmm, if these folks were looting, they would have had stacks of stuff, right? But the image that is left in the public's mind is that black people are responsible for the damage. And I saw with my own eyes, that's absolutely not true. I'm not saying that there were no black people involved. There were. But what I am saying is that the bulk of the destruction that took place was not in black people's name, was not in black people's honor and was not to support black lives. It was people that decided that this was an opportunity for them to be destructive and to destroy our community. And yes, my statement, I stand by. I want them processed it to the fullest extent of the law. Having said that, I will be reviewing a video cameras, the footage from the video cameras that are in all the businesses downtown, making sure that we are not just looking for black and brown people to arrest, but that the people that did the most damage are the ones that we are looking for. That has always been my goal is to have an equitable justice, justice process. And so I am not saying, let's just go out and arrest all the black and brown people. What I'm saying is the people who came with the intent of destroying our city, I want them prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. Those two young men who have become the poster child for the destruction downtown, I absolutely don't want any criminal activity with them. I want us to create a community accountability for those two young men because they should not have taken it just because other people were doing it. If I may, I'd also like to address the body cam issue.
Yeah.
Finally, at the Portland City Council to take funding from the body cam out of the Portland Police Bureau budget. This year, if you look at the Portland Police Bureau budget, body cams no longer exist. Prior to me getting the city council, body cams had been authorized and we have been funding body cam operations for three years. And guess what? We never bought one body camera. And I have never supported body cameras because I have seen body cam footage that police officers have. And it has never led to police officers being held accountable for egregious behavior. We could go down the list of all the film that we've all seen. And police have never been held accountable because they had a body camera on them. And so when I look at the law in Oregon that says that the body camera footage is owned by the police bureau, that the police bureau decides when it's made public and the police bureau gets to determine how it is stored. That's not accountability. That is a, that's just no accountability built into the current law around body cams. So why would we invest millions of dollars to store data we have no access to? I'll stop there and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Appreciate it. I want to invite Shonda. I know she had a question. Can you share your question again for us?
Yes, the question was earlier today, one of the pastors had said that the police in Minnesota was, they were able to get fired because of the vote that they had in place there. And that he said that they can't, the police can't get fired here for hurting anyone. And I wanted to know how can we get that changed? When? I know there's, yeah.
Thank you for the question. And yes, we were so close last legislative session to passing a bill that would have required when a police chief and police commissioner says an officer should be fired, that they would stay fired. The way the law works now is the law is, so if a police officer is fired and the police union decides to take it to arbitration, the arbitrators look at, have other police officers in the history of this bureau been disciplined for this activity? And if they have, have they been disciplined in the same manner as this particular officer? Because we rarely discipline police officers, there is no record of police officers being held accountable in this manner. And so when a police officer is fired, Fushauer is a perfect example of a police officer who was a sharpshooter, shot and killed Aaron Campbell, even though he wasn't his earpiece out. He's a great example. Sam Adams was the first police commissioner that drew a line in the sand and said, I'm just gonna fire him. He's gone. So for two years, he was gone. The union fought his fire. Two years later, the arbitrator rules, he has to get his job back, all his back pay and all his position. And he is now a member of Portland Police again. That is the challenge for us here. I would love to see what Minneapolis has as their, what their contract has in it that our contract doesn't. Because as you know, we are in the process of renegotiating a new contract with Portland Police Association. And so the arbitration bill will be back in the next legislative session. And everyone needs to support demanding that that arbitration bill makes it to the finish line. The only reason it didn't last time was because half of the legislature walked out.
I think there is a huge desire to hear more from you, Commissioner. So what I would suggest is maybe we've figured out how we can do maybe another special session where we dive deeper into some of these issues and see how we can coordinate that. I think that would be a good use of time.
I would be to do that with you.
Perfect, perfect. I do want to move into the next part of our agenda and I thank everybody who has shared, who has messaged, who has shown up, who has listened, even if they weren't talking to the stories that were, that were here. This has been a long desire of PSEP to, to have more of this kind of dialogue within our sessions. What we're now going to move into is two recommendations. As I was mentioning earlier, PSEP PSEP bylaws require that anytime we make any kind of statement or any kind of vote, that it has to be done in public with public opinion. And it was very frustrating to me because at the beginning of the week, I wanted PSEP to make a statement on the, the killing of, of the murder of George Floyd, but we were unable to do so unless, until a full body PSEP meeting, which would have been on June 23rd. So we would have had to wait an entire month. So we're gonna work to change or I'm gonna push us to change our bylaws to, to figure out how we can get out statements in a timely manner because I believe it is critical that, that, that we as a body speak to the issues the same way that other agencies and leaders are doing. And in that effort, we drafted a, a statement that I'm going to read. And then following PSEP rules and regulations, we will have, we will have PSEP members comment on it and then we'll open it up to any public comment. Although it is a statement coming from PSEP, I don't know if there's any clarification that Theo can provide on public input on a statement that's coming from PSEP. But that is the order we'll go into. Theo, if you can just message me about that and we'll figure it out. But I will read the statement and then I'll open it up to PSEP members to make their comments public and then we will vote on it. So the statement reads, you can find us on our PSEP website. That's PortlandOregon.gov/PSEP. You can find our meeting notes, all the information. Okay, Elliot just dropped it in the group chat. So the Portland Committee on Community Engaged Policing would like to express our condolences to the family of George Floyd. We are outraged by the disregard for his life and the lack of coherent response from elected leadership and from the federal government down to local municipalities to redress white supremacy and police violence. The murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis is not an isolated incident, but part of the systemic issues that plague our country, including here in Portland. According to an analysis of use of force data, black Portlanders are 8.5 times as likely as white people to experience use of force by the police. In Minneapolis, that ratio is 8.1. We implore our elected officials and law enforcement officials here in Portland to stand against white supremacy and police violence. We must do more to make system, we must do more than make symbolic statements against racism. We must change the outcomes of policing, reducing incidents of violence and targeting communities of color and other marginalized groups. We believe that it should be a priority for the new police contract to hold officers who violate policy accountable. As we respond to the issues of white supremacy and violence, we urge city leadership to center the experiences of black lives and their conversations and actions. The focus must first and foremost be on the uplifting of black communities and communities of color at this time. We call on Mayor Wheeler and Chief Rush to work with PSEP and the communities of Portland to create policy change within Portland within the police bureau in order to minimize the use of force deaths and build trust within the community. I'm gonna open it up to PSEP member comment. Okay, we're, it looks like we're good on comment. I'll open it. Elliot's got a comment.
No, I just want to support.
No, I just um, wanna support the um, the words that are here. I think that it's important in this time to make the links between what happened in Minneapolis, what's happening across the country and the longstanding history that we have in Portland that still exists today. And I think this statement does that, so thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other?
I also want to support um, the statement as written.
Okay, Amy? You're on mute. You're on mute. Amy, you're on mute.
Hold on. I'm okay with the concept, but I'm not okay with the language. It's not white supremacy. It's white privilege. And I think we need to have real conversations at another time. But to agree to something that really doesn't read what I would call proper language, I would want it rewritten before I approve it. I got the concept. I get what you're trying to say. I just don't think the words are the right choice for this message.
It's coming from Lauren.
It's more than just white supremacy, dude. It's implicit bias. There's a lot of reprogramming we all have to do. And white supremacy, I am not a member of the KKK. Thank you very much.
I'm gonna strongly disagree that uh, you don't have to be a member of the KKK to benefit from white supremacy. Uh, and that leads to white privilege. But we can agree to disagree on that point. Other, I do appreciate the comment, other comments. Uh, I see Anne has a hand up, Elliot.
I just wanted to follow up. Um, it is white supremacy and uh, I do believe um, that it is fine the way it is written. I support it.
Yeah, I also think white supremacy is the appropriate language. Um, in fact, I understand the language of white privilege, but I think I, I also have, there are lots of critiques about how white privilege um, is used. And I think white supremacy just talks, speaks more directly to a history of racism in this country and in this city.
Okay. Any other PCEP member comment? Okay, I'm gonna open it up to public comment. For the sake of time, I'm gonna take maybe four comments. There's a ton that have been already posted in the chat. Um, supporting it in its form, supporting the use of white supremacy. I'm gonna take comments though, so if you have, I have a hand.
Excuse me, please. Uh, this is Commissioner Hardisty. Um, I have some demographic breakdown of the 72 arrests last night that I think folks would be interested in who was arrested, based on Kevin Modica's question.
Can we say that right after we do this vote? Just so we stay connected with it? Okay. Thank you for that. Um, okay, so I'm gonna open up the chat here or the participants so I can see folks. Is there folks that would like to say something to this? Uh, please use the hand raise function, um, because I can't see everybody's screen. Okay, we are gonna go with uh, Kelsey. And then Lamar, and then Kevin Fitz. And we'll cap it at that for the sake of time. So uh, Kelsey, go ahead.
Hi, um, you know what? Can you hear me all right? I wanna make sure I'm doing this right.
Yep.
Great, um, good evening and on a terrible week. Um, honestly, my question or comment was in regard to what Commissioner Hardisty said. So I wanna just acknowledge that. And if now's not the time, it can wait. I raised my hand like a few minutes ago before we were discussing the document that you presented.
Got it, yep. We're gonna return to that as soon as we finish this vote.
All good, yeah, please, that's fine.
Questions or comments should be pertaining to the PCEP statement that was read. If you wanna look for it, it's in the chat function or on PCEP's website. I'm gonna go next with Lamar.
Lord of peace, everybody. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Um, I actually had a comment on the last subject, but uh, the brother already answered it for me. He was speaking about police getting into the community and actually getting to know the people. And I think that's very important because the percentage of black people that's in Oregon is very small. And on top of that, we are already deemed as, you know, evil people, ignorant, all this crap. So I think that the police also should get in streets and also the chief, um, mayor and all that stuff and actually get to know us and really see where we're coming from and stuff like that. You know what I mean? And just, I think that it'd build more love and respect between the citizens in the streets also, uh, most of the people, the majority of the people that's out here, you know, we need to come together, but we need someone or some, something that's gonna bring us together so we can all have an understanding. You know what I mean? And actually be able to share love with each other, so.
Appreciate that, appreciate that. Uh, we're gonna go with Kevin Fitz. And again, we're taking comments primarily on um, the statement, PCEP statement on the murder of George Floyd.
Yeah, hi, uh, Kevin Fitz, Oregon Mental Health Consumer Association. Just loving me preface my comments by thanking, thanking Counselor Hardisty for taking the time. And um, gosh, I sure appreciate your leadership, uh, Counselor Hardisty. Um, I'm just a community member, but I support the statement by PCEP uh, the way it's written. That's just my two cents. I wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, we are going to take a vote. I will go down the list of PCEP members that we have present. We need a majority to pass. Theo, can you tell me what that number is real quick?
You're good.
No, I'm saying what, what's the number we need? How many votes?
Five.
Okay, cool. Uh, Andre.
Hi.
Elliot.
Hi.
Anne.
Hi.
Britt.
Hi.
Uh, Vadim.
Yes.
Amy.
No.
Uh, Marcia.
Yes.
Uh, Yolanda.
Yes.
Uh, I think that's everybody and then myself, yes. So that passes.
And I'll, I'll vote yes.
Oh, sorry. My fault, my fault, my fault. Um, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine to one. The statement passes. Um, thank you guys for participating in that. Um, for folks that are just jumping in, that's what a lot of PCEP looks like. And you are looking at a volunteer group that puts in over twenty hours a week each. Uh, not a week, excuse me, a month um, on this work. So thank you for that. I'm gonna turn it over to our, my co-chair, Andrew Callic, who's gonna take over the meeting at this point and work on our second recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucky Anna. The last item on the uh, agenda tonight is a recommendation about qualified immunity. I've just uh, put the recommendation in the chat box uh, for anyone to, to dial up if you're at your uh, computer screen. Um, this is a recommendation that was put together by uh, a subcommittee that, that, that came together to uh, to do this in, in light of this week's events. Uh, I'm just gonna read the summary uh, at the top, but then I'm gonna, I'm gonna kick it to, to Andre for a slightly more detailed uh, look at this issue. Because it's, uh, even though it is, it is legal, uh, and it's, and it's dense, it's extraordinarily important and uh, influential in terms of how police can be or cannot be held accountable uh, in this country. So the summary of the recommendation reads as follows. This recommendation requests that Mayor Wheeler use the platform of his office as mayor of Portland to initiate dialogue with Oregon's delegation of elected representatives to the United States House of Representatives. This dialogue should ask those representatives to begin the process of enacting federal legislation that would revise the current doctrine of qualified immunity and grant courts greater power to hold officials accountable for violations of the law. Uh, Andre, I don't know if you wanna uh, tell everybody sort of how we came to this recommendation uh, and why we're taking this approach in terms of asking the mayor uh, to uh, seek help from our congressional representatives. But I appreciate it.
Uh, I, I will. Um, I would like to preface, uh, before I do, I'd like to start by thanking everyone who attended this, this meeting, everyone who spoke, everyone who listened. Um, you know, this is a crucial time um, in all of our communities. There's a lot of uncertainty, a lot of fear, a lot of anger. You know, all of us are beginning to, are being forced all at once to absorb a lot of information about policing in America at a rapid pace. And this is an issue that for all the anger, all the pain everyone here feels, will take focus and time and diligence, but something to address, but something we can be, begin doing now. I think back to when I was a child, growing up in a rural red area of America, hearing from there, different stories, lived stories of people both from cities as well as in rural areas about uses of force that defied common sense for the situation. And as I absorb the news of everything that was happening, both here in Portland and across America, I um, read up more on the doctrine of qualified immunity, which is a legal doctrine that makes it difficult to hold officials accountable for illegal actions. I'm not an expert on this um, by any stretch of the measure, but from what I did read, I saw stories of cases decided in courts all across America that I found deeply, deeply troubling. In the recommendation itself, I specifically list three examples. One of an officer who was not accountable because despite shooting a fifteen-year-old who simply had an airsoft gun without providing prior warning or request to drop the weapon. Um, a case involving prison officials who locked an inmate in um, in their cell with overflowing sewage for days. And a case where an officer body slammed a five-foot-tall woman for walking away from him. At a glance, these just seem wrong. And I think that is something every person can agree on. Um, and those play out differently in different communities. But that's the currently standard of, that law currently affects the standard of policing, not just in Portland, but nationwide. Um, the issue is current, might very well be before the Supreme Court, which might change or revise that law, or it might not. It's just an abundance of caution. I think it's important for us to focus on the things we can do right now to feel empowered in this time of crisis. And one of those things that we can do is, as a public body, is recommend to Mayor Wheeler to initiate dialogue with Oregon's congressional representatives to begin exploring the possibility of implementing legislation that would close those loopholes nationwide. And um, I know many members of law enforcement who try their hardest, do their best, who would feel more comfortable too knowing that it's easier to get the itchy tribute, trigger fingers off the street. The ones who, they have no choice but hoping to trust to have their back, but might not really. And um, in a time where I feel scared and hurt and powerless, and I think many of us out there do too. I think directing our attention to an effort like this is a sense of, well, will allow us to try to take this pain, take this fear and use it to make change that might prevent future harms. And um, I guess that's a overall, I guess that's all I have to say at this point.
Terrific. Thanks, thanks so much, Andre. And thank you to all of you who, who worked on this recommendation. Like the last recommendation that we just discussed, uh, the process will be PCEP member comment on this recommendation. Um, and then uh, we'll open it to everyone on the line to comment uh, before taking any action on it. So uh, first, PCEP comment.
I, we have to do a couple uh, recognitions. Uh, Senator, Representative, uh, Senator Lou Fredericks is on the line. And I just saw that Representative Blumenauer is also on the line. So I wanna thank them for joining us in this conversation. They've added some things to the chat as well.
I, I see Vadim's hand is raised. So Vadim, uh, feel free to unmute.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna say that qualified immunity is meant to protect government employees, not just police officers, from civil lawsuits unless the official violated a clearly established constitutional right. It does not prevent criminal prosecution. And in fact, the officer in George Floyd's death was arrested and charged with the crime. Um, it does protect government employees, including the police, from certain lawsuits. Um, and without it, people could sue city, state, and federal employees for any reason with taxpayers having to defend them in court. And even under the current system, uh, Reuters notes that appellate courts have denied qualified immunity in roughly forty-three percent of cases. So this is not something that's being applied to every lawsuit that's um, out there. In the context of why we're here today, George Floyd's death is a tragedy. And PCEP has requested a special meeting to hear from the community and share our communal outrage at what happened. Um, the police officers responsible in Minneapolis were prosecuted. And qualified immunity is not even being invoked in those cases. Um, so my question is, is our time not better spent at this point to hear from the three hundred-plus people that wanna talk about George Floyd and what's going on? And can we possibly table this until our next full PCEP meeting? When people can actually read what this recommendation is about and provide feedback? There's only been one day during which um, people have been, had an opportunity to review this. Um, and I, I think what it's basically asking is for the mayor of Portland to try to overturn fifty years of United States Supreme Court precedent with respect to qualified immunity um, in order to open up a floodgate of lawsuits um, to the city of Portland. Um, I, I think the intent is good here in that, you know, if people want to sue police officers or other people, they should have that right. But they do currently have that right. And they're able to do that in federal court. And it's being allowed in roughly half the cases. So before we send this recommendation to the mayor and the police chief, um, I, I would, I would rather have an opportunity to fully discuss this, get community input, see what people think about it, rather than the twenty minutes or so that we have left in this meeting. And open up the meeting to the people that are actually here for Commissioner Hardisty to provide us updates and for people to actually make the kind of recommendations that we've been hearing today about what PCEP should be doing in the future. I think that's of prime importance for this special meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Vadim. Um, I'm gonna come back to your question about, about pushing this to the end of June, but I wanna get additional uh, PCEP member comment. Andre, I saw your hands raised, but Elliot, we'll go to you first and then, and then Andre.
Yeah, first of all, I just wanna um, speak in, in favor of this recommendation um, in terms of whether it's um, appropriate for this meeting. The agenda was decided at the steering committee. And I feel like what the whole country is concerned about is the unaccountability of the police. The fact that they could stand on a man's neck, a black man's neck in broad daylight and not feel like they're accountable, not feel like they're committing murder suggests that we need to get rid of the qualified immunity doctrine and a lot of other things. And I would also add that in Minneapolis, only one of the officers has been charged and arrested. There are three other officers who were complicit, who are accessories to murder, who are still, who are still free. So I don't think that um, in terms of criminal charges, we've gone far enough in that case or in many other cases, and certainly not in, in terms of civil um, charges. There are numerous cases which Andre's recommendation talks about, which are egregious cases where the immunity, um, qualified immunity doctrine was invoked to allow officers not to be held accountable. So I think this, this recommendation speaks directly to the kind of issues we're asking. And we're not talking about opening Portland to lawsuits. We're asking the city leader, uh, Mayor Wheeler to use his political We're asking the city leader, Mayor Wheeler, to use his political power to pressure our congressional representatives to pressure the government. That's the way democracy is supposed to work. And I feel like we could help be part of that process.
Thanks, Elliot. Andre?
Yes, I want to thank both my colleagues for their comment. A few issues I want to first offer some clarification on Elliot's is that this recommendation isn't calling for an end to doctrine altogether. Given what Vadim said, that this is 24 hours notice and that this is so very quickly happening. That is a discussion that takes far more consideration than we have. But what I did see or instances of a loophole, at least within that doctrine, that allows egregious cases through. Another one that I didn't cite to but currently may very well be before the Supreme Court next year is a case called Baxter versus Bracy, where the Court of Appeals on Sixth Circuit and held in a case arising out of Tennessee that officers that sticked a tack dog on a suspect who was sitting with his hands up were entitled to qualified immunity, despite the fact that there was a case that said that it was unconstitutional to for officers to stick attack dogs on a suspect who was lying down. That Court of Appeals there said, well, we didn't have a case that exactly that already said exactly, you can't stick an intact dog on someone who surrendered with their hands up. So it applies. Again, I'm not a legal expert on this doctrine by any stretch of the calculation. But the facts of those situations tell me something is wrong. And the act of crafting and passing legislation is a slow, slow process at the federal level. At which point, any voices on all sides will have more than ample opportunity to craft any language around this. All this recommendation requests is that Mayor Wheeler begin the process, begin talking. Try to use his platform as mayor to see what we can accomplish. Because I'm with everyone here in feeling the pain, the confusion, the fear. And I know it's tempting to spend all of our time discussing that over and over and over and over as we have for decades or hundreds of years. Let's start somewhere by focusing on a solution, a conversation about a solution and see where that goes. And that's all I'm asking for. That's all this recommendation asks for is to start the conversation, have it start here in Portland and go to DC.
Thank you, Andre. A couple of PCEP members, Amy, then Marcia, then Lakiana.
I would just like to say I'd like to make a motion to move this recommendation forward for a vote. It was thought out. It was done in 24 hours. And if we need to make adjustments, we can work on it in the Behavioral Health Subcommittee. And others are welcome to join us. So I just want to make a motion to move this statement forward for a vote.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Amy. We're going to hear from a couple of additional colleagues first, and then we're going to open it to to the community before any, any vote would take place. Marcia, you're up.
Hi, I just wanted to support Andre in this and moving this forward. I think, you know, Andre did an excellent job developing this concept for the group and put a lot of work into it. And I think some of you know that I've spent most of my life to work serving people impacted by the criminal justice system and have personally experienced a family member being shot and killed by police in this state. And nothing about the, we don't have time to deliberate, I don't think. So I'd like to support this moving forward. Nothing about the current system that exists and holding police accountable is restorative. And so I support whatever we decide as far as moving forward and beginning this conversation dialogue about using the mayor's power with the rest of the state.
Thank you, Marcia. Lakiana?
I basically have nothing else to add. I think that the legal teams of the mayor, the state can figure out the exact legal jargon to to get this to work. And I'm in full support of passing this and leaving this meeting with a recommendation on the mayor's desk.
Any additional PCEP comment? Ann?
I fully support this.
Okay, thank you. If we have no additional PCEP comment, I'm going to open it to anyone else on the line. Again, if you can use the raise hand function that you can find under the persistent participant tab. I see a couple of hands raised, so I'll call on you in order. And we'll hear your comments specifically on this qualified immunity recommendation. Alan?
I'm an attorney. This isn't my area of expertise, but as far as I can tell, you're aiming right at the heart of the beast. So I think this is great. The comment about only 50% of cases or so being subject to QI, that's, that's at the end stage. But as an attorney, when I'm considering which cases I'm going to even take, when I'm doing something on contingency, I have to look and see whether I can make any money, you know, capitalism. And if, if we have the, the QI laws in place, the attorneys already know. So they're not taking many, many cases that are virtuous that that should be brought. Because they know that it's going to get kicked right out of court and they'll be wasting their time. So I don't think that statistic should dissuade you.
Thank you, Alan. Any additional community comment on the qualified immunity recommendation?
I wanted to note, Andrew, real quick, that there's ample community comments in the comment section box. Should PCEP members want to read through those briefly, then you should feel encouraged to do so. It's important that we hear from community as much as possible.
For sure. Absolutely. And I, and, and thank you to everyone who's been engaging with the chat throughout the meeting. It's, it's been very substantive and we'd love to see that. Seeing no additional hands raised, PCEP, I think we, we I think we can move to a vote. I do want to raise again Vadim's point about process really in that it is unusual that we would have a recommendation of this sort of specificity and, and this, this sort of depth that was published, you know, within 24 hours of a special meeting. So this is a unique circumstance. And I, and I do think, as we've said in the past, that community input and the ability for people to engage with our recommendation and come back with, with specific thoughts on how to make it better is something that we value. And so I do want to, to see what people think about having it at our meeting. I guess it's a little less than four weeks from now, our regularly scheduled June meeting. Or if people believe that we, we need to move ahead with a, with a vote tonight. Does anyone have a specific piece of feedback on Vadim's proposal? Elliot, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we are in extraordinary times. So I think the extraordinary times require us to act maybe in a way that is a little quicker than we're used to acting. I feel like from what the community seems to be saying on the chat and the lack of other comments that we've heard, that there is general community support for us moving forward with this. And I think the, the danger of inaction at this moment is much more serious than the danger of action. So I'm in support of doing this now.
Thanks, Elliot. Tajee, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, I'm driving through, excuse me. So I am also in support of this recommendation being passed in an expedited manner. I definitely want to hear more community input on it, but I think that, you know, as of now, like Andre and like Elliot mentioned and underscored that this is not necessarily like saying this, what we need to do exactly with it, but it's, we're encouraging, we're pushing forward our legislators to make actionable substantive change. So I think it's definitely important that we pass this. And then I also saw another comment saying that they support this, but it's a Band-Aid. And I agree with that sentiment and that we are working, I can speak specifically, the youth subcommittees work in a restorative justice recommendation that we're presenting in June. So working towards things that are proactive rather than retroactive for a case like a, you know, a police officer murdering another human being and dealing with the aftermath of that. We're trying to look at how we can restore or use restorative justice as a tool to stop that at the point of contact. So I'm in support of this as of now, but we're continuing work in recommendations to work in proactively towards things. Thank you.
Thank you, Tajee. Britt?
I was going to offer a similar message of support, so Tajee stole the words right out from me.
He, he does that the best of us. Okay, thank you, Britt. Any additional? Theo, yes, go right ahead.
Sorry, just because I know this may be the first PCEP meeting for many. I wanted to let you know a little bit about process. If a recommendation from this body passes, the mayor or chief of police, whoever it goes to, will respond within 60 days. So, so there are some tangible outcomes to what happens here in, in terms of recommendations. So I just wanted that be known if this is your first meeting.
Thank you for that, Theo. Any, any additional comment? It does seem like as a, as a board, we have a critical mass that's in favor of moving forward. So we will, we will move to a vote unless anyone else, anyone else on PCEP has comments about this. Theo, that looks like the number six. That's the number of votes we need in the affirmative to pass this tonight. And like Lakiana did with the last one, I'll, I'll go down the list. If I forget anybody, obviously, please speak up. We'll start with Tajee.
Yes, sorry. Is that what I, yes?
Well, we're, we're voting, we're voting to approve the qualified immunity recommendation.
Yes, I, 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 yes, I'm.
Thank you. Elliot?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Vadim?
So PCEP's mission is to solicit and exchange information between the community and PPB. This recommendation asks for the mayor to do something at some future point in time. And I don't know what the rush is in needing to have it done right now since he needs to contact representatives in order to even get the ball rolling. Because we've not had engagement on this, because we've not had PPB and Police Bureau input on this. Because we've not had community input and ability to read what this draft actually said in time to formulate opinions on it. And I do appreciate everybody that chimed in today. I'm just saying that I would much rather have a larger conversation around this area. So because of all this, I'm voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Vadim. Ann?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Lakiana?
Yes.
Britt?
Yes.
Yolanda?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion, the, the recommendation passes.
Me too. Okay, Marcia.
Oh, Marcia.
I vote yes. I also want to add that tonight we had upwards of 350 people on this call. This is the most people and community input we have had and we may ever have. I hope that you all continue. And so I, I disagree, respectfully disagree with Vadim, that we, we had a lot of input on this forward. So thank you all for being here today.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you all so much for taking part in this special meeting. We, we have these meetings, as Lakiana mentioned, every month, we have a full board meeting on the fourth Tuesday of every month. We have subcommittee meetings throughout the month. All of that's located on our PCEP website and on our social media. And we would, we would love to continue to engage with you because as we've said many times tonight, the wisdom, the feedback, the perspectives that all of you have as community members are essential. And we want to be your voice, one of many voices, of course, in working to improve things in Portland and making a more just and equitable city. So thank you very much for joining us.
We do have just a couple of minutes and I did tell Commissioner Hardisty that we could follow up with her report on arrests last night. So I'd love to just get that in real quick.
Of course. Yes, that's right, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for organizing this meeting. And maybe there will be in the future Zoom meetings with people in the room where the meeting is happening and other people electronically connected, right? We've learned a lot through this pandemic that we can still do our work without actually having to travel to do it. 300 people today, that means you could probably do that a lot. So very quickly, let me tell you, since Friday, there have been 73 arrests. 65 of those arrests were of adults and eight were of juveniles. 42 of those arrests were men, 18% were female and 13 were unidentified. I don't know what that means. I'm just reading what I got. The, the breakdown demographically, white 41, African American, eight, Hispanic, five, Asian, one, and 18 unidentified. So again, out of 73 arrests, 41 were white.
Counselor, how many juveniles?
There were, there were eight juveniles arrested.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What were the accounts they were arrested on?
I don't know. I just asked for the demographic breakdown. I don't have all the details of the arrests. I just wanted to know because I'm always concerned about the race of who's being impacted by police. And so I don't, I don't know what they were charged with. I'm assuming loitering, loitering, a whole bunch of this stuff.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to close this meeting real quick by just having the steering, the chairs of the subcommittees just saying when their next meeting is because folks are interested in what's happening next. I know the Behavioral Health Subcommittee is meeting the soonest. So Amy, can you give your next meeting?
Hold on. Yes, if everyone would like to join us, we're meeting Tuesday, June 5th?
Fourth?
This coming Tuesday.
June 2nd.
June 2nd. Thank you. And we'll be on Zoom and you can find our page on the PCEP's website or PCEP on Facebook. And we'll be hearing from the Behavioral Health Unit on how they do business in Portland. So it'll be a great event and we'll also be talking about community engagement protocols for the future.
What time is that at?
6:30.
Six to 7:30.
6:30 to 8.
Thank you. Let's go with Britt for the youth subcommittee.
That makes the hand look so good. Put it in the chat, will ya?
Sorry, I'm having some connection problems. What was the question, Lakiana? The question was, your subcommittee, when is it meeting, the youth subcommittee?
I want to say June 8th. Is that right, Tajee?
June 8th, at 4:00 PM. It'll also be on the website as well. We'll be discussing restorative justice recommendation and other community engagement for that recommendation as well. Thank you.
Perfect. Marcia?
Thank you. So we meet, the Racial Equity Subcommittee meets on the third Thursday of every month. I will put it in the, in the chat box again. We meet from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. We've done a lot of restructuring, so we're talking about community engagement. We're talking about building power and, and leveraging community and bringing you all in. So please join us. If you have questions about that, Lakiana co-chairs on that with me. Please don't hesitate to reach out. We want to hear from you. We want you to be, it will be hosted by Zoom on the 18th of June.
Okay, I think I'm going to turn to Andrew for the Policy and Settlement Agreement Subcommittee. You might want to give just a little context to that one, Anderson, since that one's not as straightforward.
So the Settlement Agreement and Policy Subcommittee handles any specific matters that we have to take up pursuant to the settlement agreement that created this body, but it has a broader mandate than that. But it has a broader mandate than that, hence the policy label. We also review PPB directives and, you know, is it, it's a space for any other type of policy discussion that we might want to have. Our next meeting is the 10th. Is that right? Yes. Wednesday, the 10th. It'll be 4:30 to 5:30 PM. Again, Zoom now. And you can find the link when it's up on our website. Thank you.
Thank you. The steering committee, this is the kind of the executive body of PSEP, is going to be meeting on Tuesday, June 9th at 5:30 PM on Zoom. And then our next full body meeting, which will be like this, will be on the 23rd. This was a special meeting. That's why it was on a Sunday and there was only 24 hour notice. But we, like we said, we had over 350 people. So that was awesome that you all turned out and we appreciate your support. This is what's going to make PSEP stronger is by having community voices to back everything that we're doing. Really want to thank all the committee, committee members for their time in getting this together, Andrew for helping facilitate. For Theo, Judith and Claudia for being the staff members supporting us. And I believe Open Signal was the one doing the technicals. Not today. No, not, not then. But they do do a lot of stuff. Have a great night and we will talk to you soon.
Thank you all. Peace.
For those still on the line, I'm going to be ending the meeting.